City Council, we'll call the meeting to order and call your attention to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. You'd now please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
To your life, the United States of America, and to your brother, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a breathing justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Granquist.
Here.
Arnns.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Jackson.
Clausen.
Here.
Hildebrand.
Here.
Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda with one requested change, removing number eighteen from the consent agenda to the regular agenda.
I'll make the motion as amended.
Second.
Motion second, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, we now look for a motion to approve the amended full agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, if there is discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right, that takes us to item number twenty-six, under Special Presentations on the council agenda. First proclamation is recognizing the month of November as read aloud to a child month. I will read the proclamation. Whereas literacy is the fundamental building block of all learning and is essential to the growth and success of every child in our city, and whereas reading to children enlarges their vocabulary and enhances their listening skills thereby fostering intellectual growth and a more positive attitude toward reading, and whereas reading to a child is a simple and priceless act that benefits both adult and child, positively contributing to family literacy and strengthening the bond between a parent and child, and whereas when parents assume the responsibility for children's literacy, making a commitment to reading for twenty minutes a day, children become more healthy, resilient, and inquisitive; and whereas Read Aloud to Your Child for Twenty Minutes a Day is a nationally recognized program that has been in existence for more than twenty-five years, and whereas Read Aloud Norfolk, the Norfolk Public Library, Norfolk area schools, and other organizations representing parents, teachers, librarians, and concerned citizens advocate for reading aloud to children because it fosters healthy interaction between adults and children, and whereas reading aloud to children will enhance family literacy and the well-being of young people throughout our city. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Josh Mooney, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, by the power vested in me, do hereby proclaim November two thousand twenty-two as Read Aloud to a Child Month in the City of Norfolk and the surrounding area, and encourage all parents, teachers, librarians, and other caring adults to read aloud to a child every day. Do we have some folks here tonight to receive the proclamation?
We have quite a few.
Okay, here's some.
It's not free for everybody. How about we line up for a picture? Can you do that? Yeah?
Let's look here first, three, two, one.
Good evening, I am Mark Clausen, I am the president of Read Aloud Norfolk. We have a number of people here with us tonight. We have a couple of members of our Read Aloud Norfolk Board of Directors, we have families who are invited by the Norfolk Public Library, and some members of our Primetime Family Reading Time Program, which is currently going on in Norfolk. I mentioned Primetime Family Reading Time. Primetime Family Reading Time is a family literacy program that was brought to Nebraska from Louisiana, brought by Nebraska Humanities. Nebraska is second oldest in Louisiana in the number of offerings of primetime, and it's a very special family literacy program, and Norfolk is one of the leaders in Nebraska in that program. We have offerings at Grant, Washington, and then the New Optimists presented a couple of times each year at Norfolk Public Library. We recently achieved a couple of different milestones. One of those is we provide a book called Read Your Bunny. One of the ways we educate parents about reading aloud to children is we provide a copy of Read Your Bunny to new moms and dads as they leave the hospital. It's a book by Rosemary Wells that has a message, "If you read your bunny twenty minutes a day, someday your bunny will read to you," is the message. And recently we purchased our fifteen thousand copy that we have provided to parents in the Norfolk area. We're in the process of organizing the Children's Day Festival, which is, understandably, the largest event at the mall each year. It's always the first Sunday in February, and we will plan to give away somewhere in the neighborhood of a thousand, twelve-hundred books in three hours. And then lastly, I would mention that we are the local champion for Dolly Parton's Imagination Library. We brought that to Norfolk a year ago, we're just wrapping up a year. And during that time, you know, we currently have five hundred and seventy-seven children enrolled, and we've had ninety-nine graduates, so six hundred and seventy-six children have already benefited from that program, and we've given away five thousand eight hundred and forty-one books. And both of those numbers we expect will grow in the coming year. And then last but not least, you know, you hear of all these books and stuff, well, we hit another milestone, we've donated over ninety thousand books now, since Read Aloud started in two thousand and two to families and children. Again, all of them to the point of promoting reading aloud to children. So, thank you, Mayor, for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you to all the children and the students who came to participate in this tonight, and we're proud of you for being part of this program. And we want to thank the Optimists and the library and the area schools, and parents and families for supporting this. I think, as Mark said, this is one of the strongest programs in the state of Nebraska, and that's because a lot of people care enough here to keep it going year after year. So, thank you very much. Okay, next, we have another special item on the agenda. Number twenty-seven is recognition of this year's crop of Norfolk One-O-One Citizens Academy graduates. So, just a little bit, Nick, I think we'll come forward and talk a little bit about the academy, but just in short, this is an effort by the City of Norfolk to engage directly with citizens who want to learn more about city operations and how the city works. And so, Nick, you want to take it away and talk about this year's class?
Yeah, so, good evening, Mayor and Council. So Norfolk One-O-One, for those of you that don't know what this class is, as the mayor mentioned, it's an opportunity for citizens to take a night once a week. This was a seven-week course, three hours, once a week, every Tuesday, six to nine, and each week they visit a different division, whether that's police, fire, water division, the WPC plant, we were everywhere throughout the entire city. So it's really great to get that behind-the-scenes look, but one thing I always like to highlight to the class is you get to meet the people behind each division as well. I think that the city has great staff, it's our greatest asset, and from some of the comments I've heard from the people, they love meeting all the staff members as well. So I commend all the citizens who took part this year, because it's a commitment, seven weeks, three hours each week. They had homework as well, they didn't let them just breeze on by for this, you know, they had to work for this. So, again, I want to thank them all for taking the time, and thank all the staff who took the time when it was their night to present as well. That was, it means a lot to all the citizens, and we look forward to continuing this on next year. So Mayor, if you want to come down and hand out some certificates, and then we'll get a class picture.
Yeah, nice.
Okay, so first, we have Kay Anderson.
We're gonna do a group picture of the.
Angie Bailey. Brad Brooks.
Jerry, I'm actually gonna take a mugshot as well at the police station.
First one. First one.
He was our representative, actually.
Jennifer Rippon. Olivia Tertel.
Not to be a headache, but if we could have the line standing in front of the podium.
Smart. That's why he's the communications manager.
All people in the back, I see.
All right, scooch in. Okay, there we go. Ready, three, two, one. One more, three, two, one, perfect.
All right. Thank you all once again for giving up your free time to take part in the academy. This was something that started, I guess, in two thousand fourteen, is that right, Nick? Okay. And we took a little break for the last couple of years due to COVID, but we're glad that it's been revisited. And what's the next opportunity for folks who might be interested to be part? When does the signup period start again?
We'll first August.
Okay, okay, all right, very good. Thank you all once again. And thank you, Nick, for organizing and coordinating. All right, that takes us. That takes us to our regular agenda, and number eighteen, item number eighteen, would look for a motion to consider resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash fifty-four, declaring the city's official intent under Internal Revenue Code regulations to incur indebtedness, which includes reimbursement of expenditures for relining two sanitary sewer mains.
I'll offer for consideration, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash fifty-four.
Okay, motion second, and for some background on this, I think we'll hear from either Randy Gates or Steve Ramis.
Steve can probably answer any project-specific questions better than I can, but this is for relining two sanitary sewers in Norfolk. One's a twenty-one-inch sanitary sewer that goes from approximately Nineteenth Street and Center Drive to eight oh five Omaha Avenue, and that's in our CIP at one point five million. And we are also relining that thirty-six-inch sanitary sewer main from Fourth Street Monroe Avenue to two thousand Logan Street, which is in the budget for one million two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We intend to fund these two projects with tax-exempt utility revenue bonds. IRS regulations in general require resolutions stating intent to reimburse expenses from bond proceeds if the funds are expended more than sixty days in advance of bond issuance. We begin to incur costs for these projects and recommend approval of this intent resolution. I'd answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Andy, for that. And Steve, do you want to provide some background on the infrastructure work being done here?
Mayor and Council, there's three sections showing up here on the image. Two of them are in red, and then the middle segment is in blue. The middle segment, we just finished up earlier this spring, it was the portion that was in the worst case, or worst situation. These are large, large sewers in the range of thirty inches. I think the red one up to the north, kind of by the mall, is twenty-one inches, the red one to the south is thirty-six inches, and the blue one in the middle, I think, was thirty. These are asphalt-lined CMP sewers, is what they are, and that asphalt lining is aging and separating from the CMP, and these are our major sewer mains or interceptors for us that carry sewer down to the treatment plant there on, just east of Logan. We did a contract with Olson back in April of this year, about fifty-two thousand, if I recall correctly, to see if they would accept the lining or whether the condition was beyond that that we could line. We're pretty confident in the northern section, still waiting for some information to come out on the southern section, but right now it does look like they would be able to be lined. So, these have been on our tenure CIP for some time, they are on there as bonded projects with revenue bonds. We would hope to be moving into design probably in January and bidding those out, probably late spring.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any questions?
Yeah, Randy, what are the terms on that bond, like length and?
What was that?
What are the terms on the bonding, the indebtedness of the bond?
We would probably issue twenty-year bonds for these.
Any other questions or comments, Council?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Jim McKenzie, I guess my question is, how does this bonding fit in with the long-term planning for those necessary improvements? Is there a master plan for how much debt we're going to continue to issue for these improvements? If so, how much debt do you anticipate over the next ten years? What will be necessary for increases in water and sewer rates, this being sewer rates to cover the debt? When I look at your history of bond indebtedness out of the budget, in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, the revenue bond indebtedness looks like it was approximately five million. Six years later, today, it looks like it's in that fifteen to sixteen million, so it looks like that revenue bond indebtedness has tripled in the last six years. So, I guess my question is, it looks like it's higher than it's ever been in the past ten years, so I guess my question is, we continue to issue more and more debt? How, is there a plan to pay that off? How are we going to pay off all that debt? We continue to issue it, and rates aren't keeping up, and so I'm just trying to understand what the plan is.
We do have a water and sewer master plan, and these bonds are part of that. Just like under our CIP, we've got... And my spreadsheet with CIP just disappeared on me. But there's various bond issues throughout the next ten years on both water and sewer side, but these are factored into our master plan, and will be paid for primarily for water rates.
Is there, I mean, is there a plan that goes along with that for raising rates to cover that?
Yeah, I don't know what those rate increases are off the top of my head, but yes, there's plans to increase rates.
Can that be made public so that we know what that is?
Yeah, I could find that out.
Steve, do you want to address that?
So, Jim, to partially answer that question, so we do our capital planning at least ten years out in terms of starting the budget for those capital plans, our water and sewers master plans are based on a twenty-year vision of need, and we do do a very comprehensive rate model, Black &amp; Veatch out of Denver, they're a very large international engineering company, they have prepared those rate models for us. The intent is that ongoing we'll be keeping those up, but that rate model matches our tenure CIP, and the purpose of that is to look at rates so that we can understand those across that ten-year period. And I would, I would have to think that, you know, we could make that information generally available. It's a planning tool for us, so it's kind of, you know, just part of that process, but it's a very valuable tool and a very important part of our water and sewer plans for the community.
I guess my concern would be, when I see that our debt has tripled in the last six years, that means that our rate increases aren't keeping up to pay for the infrastructure improvements that we're making, so at some point in time you have to make a decision, how are you going to do that? And just curious how that's going to happen.
And so, I mean, and I think the mayor and council can speak a little bit to that too, but certainly over the last few years, there has been, you know, water, both water and sewer, that we've put in on, on the city's expense, the industrial sewer and water extensions, there were some extension out to the west side, and there's been some others. And that was intentionally done as a part of investing into the community and needing to get shovel-ready for economic development purposes, and that's certainly a key component of our ability to grow and meet the demand on those systems. So as we see that economic growth, those will start to pay off those systems and that debt. At the same time, there's other components out there, the Omaha Lift Station, you know, that design was done and shelved as part of some economic development that didn't develop. But that project is going to be a very important part of our growth as a community at some point. That five-million-dollar project, six years ago, seven years ago, is now morphed closer to a ten-million-dollar project. And so I mention that because we could have put that in five years ago, six years ago, five and a half million, and so the cost of waiting for projects that we know we're going to need for growth, there's a cost of waiting. So we try to, we do our best to balance those, and that's part of that rate model that we maintain.
I just think it's important to understand that, I mean, the ratepayers ultimately are going to pay for those extensions that you're hoping to have some economic development for, and at what point in time does the economic development come to fruition that the ratepayers don't have to pay for that?
Thank you, Jim. So, Steve, you characterized a lot of the increase in investment over the last few years has been for extensions, infrastructure extensions in the new parts of town to accommodate new housing, new commercial, new industry growth, is that correct?
That's correct, but some of that debt is also related to projects that have been assessed out. So we consume that cost for all the residential development that's going on, where those projects are being assessed back as part of an assessment district, we bear the upfront cost of that until those projects, you know, those lots are sold and there's residents in there. So there's some of that debt, that debt will get paid back pretty quickly as, I mean, we continue to work with our builders, they're continuing to develop new land and push out into new subdivisions, so, but that, I would say it's not quite fifty-fifty, but it's an even split in there, generally even split between real growth from a subdivision perspective and just economic development growth.
Yeah. So, new investment to help accommodate expansions and growth throughout the community, and what we're talking about here tonight, these relining projects, for context, again, can you tell us how old these lines are right now?
I don't have an actual date, Mayor, but I would, I'm guessing, these are older systems, these for sure are older than fifty years, you know, they were never intended to last too much longer than what they have currently. We were able to, in that blue line, we were able to pull a new line through that, and we're hoping to do something very similar on these, but they're at the end of their functional life right now.
And what would happen if we just didn't do anything? Or we waited five years from now?
If a big chunk of that asphalt peeled off and plugged our system, you know, we would have an emergency situation at the plant, because we would be hemorrhaging raw sewage.
That doesn't sound like a good situation.
No.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments?
I think a nice, just a little quick, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna ask, Steve, you were getting to the questions I was gonna ask, but how long does this relining last, and why reline instead of replace, I guess?
I don't have a real good answer for that, Councilman. I would say these relining projects are going to give us another fifty years, just based on current information around the type of lining that we're looking at in there. You know, we always look at the alternatives of either hardlining, running a parallel line next to the existing, you know, so we try to look at all the options when we make that decision, including a lifecycle analysis.
One thing that might be helpful and good for a presentation like this would be when we're talking, Randy, about like how much is being issued in indebtedness, and like Steve brought up a little bit ago, you know, some of those are covered by assessments, right? Percentage of that is assessments, and the percentage of that is now going to be paid with tapping fees, you know, like when we do the tapping fees and whatnot, and then that's, then obviously some of that is, has no payment except for rates from the utility district. So I think it'd be nice to see what, like, what percentage is an assessment, what percentage is going to be a tapping fee, and what percentage is just an outright percentage of, you know, what actual ratepayers are going to have to deal with as we continue to grow with the community.
Yeah, we can put something like that together.
I think it'd be a nice thing to look at, so.
Any other questions or comments, Council? Hearing done, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash fifty-four is adopted.
Item twenty-eight on the regular agenda, I'd look for a motion to consider approval of a contract with Retgen Construction Incorporated for the city portion of the Bonita Water Main Loop project for an amount not to exceed fifty-two thousand five hundred and five dollars, fifty-two cents.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval.
Second.
Motion second, for some background on this, again, Steve Ramis, please.
Mayor and Council, what this is doing is this is adding a segment of pipe between Lake Meadow, Meadowman's Lake Subdivision Second Edition and the water main that we put in here about a year ago down Highway eighty-one. That water main that we put in on Highway eighty-one comes in... That water main that we put in on Highway eighty-one comes in along Bonita, up to the point where there used to be a lagoon and doesn't extend any further past that, that old lagoon site. As Medlin's Lake Subdivision Second Edition started to come out of the ground, it was desirable by the developer to extend that to the east. Approximately, it's on the back here, developer wanted to extend that east at his expense about four hundred thirteen feet. And at that point, that left about seven hundred and forty feet to connect it in to the extension over that we did on Highway eighty-one. So as a, as a, from a water service, water quality perspective, it would be desirable for us to make that connection. A, we've got really good rates on that Medlin Subdivision right now to make that connection, so the cost is favorable. And just again, from a water quality perspective, that would create a loop in that system and there wouldn't be stagnant water sitting on that, on that eastern end of the existing Bonita Drive segment, nor would there be water sitting on the western end of what Mr. Medlin wants to extend there, that four hundred feet. The total cost of the extension is about seventy-eight thousand dollars for Mr. Medlin. Of that, fifty-two thousand, five hundred and five would be ours. So because we did not foresee this as part of the subdivision agreement, we did not write the requirement to make that connection into the subdivision agreement. Had we done that, we still would have had this cost. This would have been our cost for this portion. So we're, again, just desiring to take advantage of the fact there's a contractor on site, we have good prices, and it would be a benefit to the community from a water quality perspective.
Any questions, comments, Council? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item 29, I would look for a motion to consider approval of change order number one with Steve Harris Construction Incorporated for the Benjamin Avenue Trail Project resulting in a net increase of six thousand, two hundred fifty-seven dollars, seventy-two cents.
I'll make a motion.
Motion second. Once again, Steve, for background, please.
Mayor, I'm going to ask the Assistant City Engineer to come up and walk through that.
Evening, Ann.
Good evening. Mayor and Council, this is the change order for the Benjamin Avenue Trail Project that Steve Harris constructed. They went in and they did the trail from Benjamin Avenue over east to Highway thirty-five up to the Highway thirty-five right-of-way and then south along Victory to Sycamore Street. So about six thousand linear foot of the ten-foot trail that they have completed. This change order encompasses the, kind of the final pay quantities. Like any project, there was a little, little more here, a little less there. So this is finalizing those pay, app, pay quantities for the net increase of the sixty, six thousand, two hundred fifty-seven dollars.
So Ann, does this stay within the bid specs?
Yes.
And as far as this project goes, if you go into the east side of Highway thirty-five to tie into the existing trail there to the north of Dollar General, I see that section is not done.
That has not been completed yet. Steve Harris had completed the trail up to that point and there was a waiting period for the end dot right-of-way permit that we were waiting on. And it took a little bit longer than expected to get that reviewed and back to us. And Steve Harris had already gone through and did the rest of the trail. They actually worked really fast on it. So that portion of the trail is left to be done and we're working with a couple of other contractors here in town to get some prices from them to do. So somebody local. Steve Harris is out of, like, South Dakota? Or no, they're, they're not.
Carroll.
Carroll. They're not local here in town.
Right. So this is not the end of the cost of the project because we still...
Not the complete end of the, the project.
This is just Harris' part.
Yes. So for Steve Harris' portion, this would be the, the complete quantities. They will still also have to do the pedestrian signals there too, which is subcontractor from Steve Harris, so.
Any idea when those will happen?
They should happen here pretty soon. I talked with the electrician a couple of weeks ago and they were waiting on their items to get delivered, so.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, please vote.
Thank you. All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item thirty, would entertain a motion to consider approval of change order number one with BX Civil and Construction for the Benjamin Avenue Thirteenth Street to First Street project resulting in a net decrease of twelve thousand, five hundred fifty-seven dollars, fifty-one cents.
I'll make consideration for approval. Second.
Motion. And a second, Steve?
Mayor and Council, this change order is substantially wrapped around the traffics, the new traffic signal that'll go in at Benjamin and Riverside. Bid item one twenty-one was a final design for the signal footing portion of that project. There were, there was a, some unit, there were some units put, included in the, in the list of items that the contractor bid upon final design of the footings. The quantities of those, those items are now being extended to the final quantities required, again, per the final design. That is roughly about a ninety-two thousand dollar increase as a function of, of that. And that is for bid items one twenty-two and one twenty-three. That is the concrete for the footing and the reinforcing still for the footing. In addition here, we are also bringing to the table some decrease. And I see here, I did not show what those decreases, yeah, I do. Reductions in bid, bid items thirty-five, forty-two, and seventy-eight, which were modified as a function of bid alternate one. Bid alternate one being the enhanced landscaping. And so to, to an extent, those items were replaced by some of the items in that bid alternate one, so we're able to remove those from the contract. I could go through each of those in more detail if you desire. There is a, a line item list attached to, to this agenda item that lists each item being increased and decreased. The net here is for a net decrease to the contract of twelve thousand, five hundred fifty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, Council?
Steve, my question is just more on the lines of this, this is talking about bid items and I don't know how many bid items are in this, and I assume it's one full total contract, First Street to Thirteenth Street.
Yeah, there's two hundred and forty, I think, two hundred and forty-two individual line items that make up that total for, for the contract.
So could we see this throughout the project? I mean, we have this year, all the next year. I assume it's going to take all the next year to finish this out. Could we see increases or decreases throughout this? Or how often would we?
We are, we are tracking, I mean, as, as we have just smaller increases or decreases in numbers, we would, you know, be updating, be updating Council either at, at a work session or through a subcommittee as to just generally where we are. You know, to the extent that this was a fairly significant increase, I did want to get this here in front of Council for action before we move forward on that. I would tell you that related to this, typically, we wouldn't see this big of a change. Normally, the quantity that's included as a function of establishing the bid item is much closer to the actual quantity expected. And that's not the case here. We did go through and look at average unit bid prices through the Department of Transportation in terms of steel and concrete for signal footings, and these are substantially close to those, to those numbers. As we go forward on the contract, I would tell you that we are tracking additional cost savings on the contract into the six-figure component that we would be bringing forward once we're comfortable with those numbers. But at this point, we're through most of the risk where I would see the, foresee the risk in the project, that being the storm sewer and these signals.
Little, little bit off topic, but is there any, I guess, update you could share on how they're doing and how the project's going?
They're doing, they're doing well. They're certainly behind the schedule they were hoping to be on. You know, they were hoping to be poured out here by the first part of November. We're, we're into the second week now of November. They've got one more big pour left for permanent concrete and then a couple approaches of permanent concrete. And then there'll be some pours, probably three, four pours of temporary concrete just to close everything in so we have a nice solid surface. And then that temporary concrete would come out next year as we continue on the additional phases. Some of that temporary concrete is going to be around that box culvert that's right next to Burger King. Probably here in about two weeks is, once we get Benjamin Avenue completely open and temporary pavement marking down for the winter, they'll close off the south half of that box and start the demo on the box lid and start the extension of that box to the south. They expect the first half to take about six weeks and then they would flip traffic and start working on the north half of that box. Altogether, I think they're hoping to be done with the box by the end of January and then have Benjamin open, that east half open for the duration. It's been a good project. The biggest delay in the last two months has been cement. There's this fairly substantial supply issue in the cement industry and it's not just here in Norfolk, it's, it's all across, all across at least the central part of the United States that I'm aware of. And so we're getting, working with our suppliers and working with other concrete distributors here just to keep the project moving as best we can.
I'll hit on one more thing while you said it. I talked about temporary concrete around that box culvert. I think the biggest complaint I hear about is how rough that asphalt is going across over there. So if they were to do it again, maybe a little smoother than...
Yeah. And we have, we have messaged that on, on behalf of, of Council and comments that I, I received to the contractor.
Thanks, Steve.
Steve. This coming Wednesday night, we will have a public open meeting for the Benjamin Avenue project. We've been doing that on a monthly basis, inviting people to come in. Contractor does a really good job of kind of explaining where they're at on the project and answering anybody's questions.
That's at the library?
That's here in the council chambers at five-thirty.
Ann, those meetings have happened on a regular basis throughout the course of the project, correct?
Correct, yep. Since the beginning of the project, we've been doing them once a month, usually, yeah, towards the beginning of the month, depending on your rate schedule, so. But we, we put that notice out and Nick does a good job of putting that notice out, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, Council? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item thirty-one, I would look for a motion to consider approval of change order number two with United Contractors Incorporated for the First Street Bridge and End Stream Improvements Project resulting in a net decrease of twenty-four thousand, six hundred five dollars, ninety-one cents.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion second. Once again, Steve, please.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, this is a progress change order here specifically for the river portion of the First Street Bridge and End Stream Improvement Project. Wanted to get this in front of you. There's a couple of items in there. One, there was an electric pole or some directional boring that needed to get done in terms of facilitating power on the site and power to the restroom. The light poles, the light poles were not awarded with the appropriate outlets in them for lighting and/or other uses of accessory items like we have in the other lights in the downtown area. There's also, if you look at the individual items on there, you'll notice there's about sixty, sixty-five thousand dollars in savings on structure number eight in terms of some of the stone, the large stone, the four-foot boulders, the three-to-eight-inch stone bedding, the ungrouted riprap and some of the structural fill. But in li, in light of the change order number one where we added around a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for that piling, I did, I wanted to bring a, a decrease back to you now that structure number eight is, is complete. I would share as we go forward, we may not see as much savings per structure, but we are seeing a consistent savings in structures between structure number seven and number six that are substantially complete. There may be a little bit of follow-up work. But it does look like, at least from the river portion of the project, we will see continued savings as we finish out that portion of the project.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Any questions? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
And lastly, item thirty-two, would look for a motion to consider approval to purchase Burke Playground Structures with Creative Sites LLC using the Sourcewell Contract with state bid pricing not to exceed one hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred forty-nine dollars, seventy cents. And for some background on this, Nate Powell, our Parks and Recreation Director.
Mayor, Council, thank you. This is the Johnson Park Playground as part of the new construction project that we have out there. We have the defined space. We know the space that's needed for a playground structure. Like to get this ordered because of supply chain issues. I've heard that some of the playground manufacturers are taking a year, a year and a half to get these out. So this one, I'm hearing I can get this one in a few months and that would be fantastic for us to make sure we can get that installed in a timely manner. This is the Source, a Sourcewell Contract with state bid pricing. Staff will be installing the structure. We've provided them with the training and equipment to do so. We have a certified playground safety inspector now on staff. And this also, this will provide us savings for the project by installing it ourselves. So staff recommends approval of the Burke Playground Structure with Creative Sites LLC for one thirty-three, nine forty-nine, and seventy cents.
Nate, is this similar to one that says at, or at Skyview or any other ones that we have, I guess?
This one's a little bit unique. Each one's quite a bit different. This one's more kind of, you know, outdoorsy, has the rock theme to it with, you know, for a climbing rock on there and some more climbing features.
I'm thinking more like manufacturing or assembly-wise.
Yeah, Burke Playground is, I think, the ones that installed the one at, yeah, at Skyview.
Okay.
Yep.
A quick question. Pretty amazing-looking equipment coming in. It's going to be pretty neat. But like the existing stuff that's there now, what happens with all that? Where does it go? Does it, you know, is it...
It, it just has to get recycled into the landfill or in a recycling center.
Okay.
Because it's probably going to get damaged on the way, on when you take it out.
When you take it down, it'd be, yeah, gotcha. So I don't think that's incredibly old. I mean, I think it was done, what, twenty years, maybe fifteen, twenty years, I think. If I remember wrong, I think the Lions donated some of that. Maybe I'm wrong.
Yep. I don't know the history on the old equipment. Yep. Sorry.
What is the surface around the play, playground area?
About forty-five hundred square feet.
And what, what's the material?
Oh, the material right now we're planning is, is the engineered wood fiber. Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Nate. Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Okay, that concludes this meeting of the Norfolk City Council. We are adjourned.